I call the regular city council. Regular meeting in the Bay City Council to order Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty four, six at five PM. Can we get a roll call please?
Melissa Musa here, County Corbin.
Here.
Dan Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skyes.
Here.
Sandy here.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda.
We'll go through.
Second.
Jason and Melissa. Any discussion on agenda? Seeing none, council please vote. It is approved. Case is consent agenda and the amendment you remove for such consideration.
We vote to approve.
Second. Meeting. Any other discussion there, council please vote. It is approved. Takes us into public forum, which is time to set aside your comments from the public on topics for city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please keep your comments at five minutes or less. We'll go on the order. We receive the cards. First is Jen Samuelson.
Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, after the last uh city council meeting, as we will speak with Aaron briefly at the parking lot regarding the bonds that have been issued for the uh sewer facility. And specifically speaking about the sinking fund that is in there. And the fact that in the sinking of sinking fund, you're allowed to reinvest the proceeds of your in the sinking fund. Uh, for example, in such things as uh US treasuries and municipal bonds. So with US treasuries, you. Those are backed by the full credit of the United States government. They're basically to save us the best. And uh municipal bonds you can get that aren't sure. They will retire rate. Um, so the reason that I brought that up with Aaron is the fact that I heard it's probably over sixteen million dollars much front. Um, as part of the payment related to the whatever their costs are. Um, for the sewer uh facility. So if you sit down and you take a look at. To taking sixteen million dollars to put even that sinking. And buying US treasuries for thirty years right now. It's the current coupon. Um, it's paying four point six percent. The yield maturity is a little under four and a half, hovering at four and a half. So if you take four and a half percent on sixteen million dollars for thirty years. That generates twenty one point four million dollars of simple interest. So that sinking fund after thirty years would have thirty seven point four million. Using simple interest. But if you chose to take the interest every year and reinvest it at whatever rate you could get. That sinking fund would have forty million dollars after thirty years, which would equate to about two thirds of the cost by understanding that the outstanding bonds that built the facility. So. You know, well, the reason I bring this up is to see if there's, I don't know what other things you're considering as far as solutions here. But this is a possible solution that resulted driving down the cost to the water users in the city. Whether it be you do it as I explained and use it to pay down the principal amounts of the bonds when they come due. Or whether you that use that annual interest every year to pay down the interest payment. Because like the one bond series that I was able to find, uh, the interest rate was going three quarters percent. Well, right now with the treasuries at four and a half, I'm just using round numbers. Say four and a half here, about two and a half times that. So that interest that you could earn would pay about forty million dollars for the interest on about forty million dollars of bonds on basis. Or you could use that interest to cover operations and maintenance and that sort of thing. So I wanted to put this out there, throw some numbers at you. Uh, so you can see the magnitude of what might come out of that sixteen million dollars. And see how that penses on according to or against other options that you may have. Um, then what results should drive the costs down to the water usage in the community. Any other any questions for me?
Jim, do you want to tell us about your credentials?
Yeah, I have a master's degree in business. I was an investment banker here for many years and. I advise all the companies on mergers and acquisitions, finances and that sort of thing. Can't tell you the dollar amount of transactions I've done, but uh done business on more different companies and whether it be IPOs, mergers and acquisitions, that sort of thing. So, um, you know, I'd like to ask, I can't answer anything, but if you guys, I think, what was clarity? Is that who you mentioned there? Was the city financial advisor?
Oh, uh, no, um. My name's Melissa Maloney, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so we had to, we had to talk with, it means my name's.
I, I originally. But I, I'd like to, you know, you guys, please, but I'd like to suggest that you guys, if you're, I think, speak with the city financial advisor, look at what type of bond portfolio you could put together. To see that if you did this, how does that pan out? Whether it's a mix of treasuries and I suppose because you came there and I suppose that aren't sure. So you're sitting at the same risk really that you would with the treasuries. And how that pans out um compared to the other options and what that would do. In effect, to water rates for the city and I'm happy to sit in on that call or you guys can get ahold of me. Do you have any additional questions? Um, because it does happen. Over time and it would, you know, drive down the costs to to the water users. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys, Mills, man.
Yeah. And uh, many of you, like. Uh, Jordan, you have my number. Um, Jason, you have my number. Uh, Chris has my number, Henry, you have my number. Feel free to share my number amongst yourselves for those that you have it. Feel free to reach out. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you want me to come. When you do a call, I'm happy to sit down.
Next up, we have Eric.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, this is the first time I've actually ever been to a council meeting, let alone spoken, so uh, Eric, please. Uh, I live on Eighth and H Street. Um, and. If you were to drive from Sixth, uh, from Sixth all, all the way out to the high school on H Avenue. I believe the only completely uncontrolled or uh intersection without any kind of signs on it is Seventh and H. Uh, it's right next to my house. And uh, I've seen a number of, there was recently a car accident there. Uh, where one of the uh people involved in that could have sworn there was a, a sign there. I don't think there ever was. Uh, but a lot of people, it seems, think that there's a sign here. Uh, myself, I've seen a car uh racing right through that intersection, most likely assuming. Um, that there's a sign on the uh giving, giving a yield sign or quote of some kind um on seven. Um, so I simply propose that we put, I, I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't know exactly the right answer to this, but I'd like to have some kind of uh traffic control sign. Be a stop sign, yield sign, four way, two way, whatever uh someone might be a bit more experienced than I am. Uh, maybe necessary or proper there.
That's something we'll pass off and have our staff people look at and I'll report back if council chooses. Yes, sounds good. Seventh and H.
Seven and H, that's right. Uh, additionally, the road is doing very poorly there. Uh, so the car impression, I guess, probably was doing around thirty or thirty five, which granted was a lot faster than it, this should have been going. But I think it actually caught air. So. Uh, smoothing that out may not hurt, even though we don't need people doing that fast. Are there any other questions or anything?
Thank you for bringing it up.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who is speaking in public forum? Seeing none, we will close public forum. We need to hold business aid through Peter West under thirty six for ways for improvement, facility improvements phase two from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated. The amount of being eight thousand four hundred ninety dollars ten cents. Will we approve? Second, Jason, Steve. Seeing no discussion there, council please vote. Approved, takes us to B, approved pay request number twenty six. For ways for facility improvements phase three from Boomerang Corporation, amount three hundred seventy five thousand one hundred forty six dollars sixty seven cents.
Vote to approve.
Second, seeing be, alright. Seeing no discussion there, council please vote. Approved, takes us to C, approved pay request number three for twenty twenty four three improvement project from Constrictor Incorporated. The amount of one hundred and five thousand five hundred fifty three dollars and ninety cents.
Will you approve?
Second, Melissa, Steve. Seeing no discussion there, council please vote. Approved, it's D, HMA overlay project at G Street revitalization from Men Roads. A changeover number three in the amount of one hundred sixty eight thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. Vote to approve. Second, Steve, Sandy, discussion time.
Yeah, uh, we already made a change order for the. Subbase, now this is for subbase.
This is the change order for the subbase. The other ones for different pipe, pipe and collection services for it. Um, so this one basically provides a stabilizer to the subbase, so we don't actually have to remove the board and add block. Yeah, we're, we're doing a new intake, that move the intake and adjust.
Anything else? Seeing none, council please vote. It is approved. Takes us to B, approved pay request number two, the amount of three hundred eighty seven thousand seven hundred one dollars and ninety cents. Second, Jason, Dan.
Of course, we're ready to finish, I believe. Uh, they're gonna start building out and doing asphalt. Either the end of this week or next week. It sounds like. Almost all the curves and gutters. Curves and gutters are done. They have two more. Broadway approaches and then all that would be done. So he will transfer the forecast or do any of this.
The end of discussion. Council please vote. It's approved. Takes us to E, discussion of perfect follow-up regarding request from Rodney Vines. I'll make a motion to deny his request. Sorry. Thank Jason, discussion.
I guess I voted here for Rodney. Is there anything that we didn't hear already for Rodney that influenced that decision?
I don't really know. I mean, to this credit, it was a designated area. There was. Clear defined. All grass area. But. It's probably the second or third time that I've discussed with him about owning his yard and things like that. So. Uh, he called this morning and said that. He still doesn't want to move, will, if that's what he has decided, so.
The problem is you can't differentiate someone who's keeping it for wildlife habitat between something that just doesn't want to own their yard.
Correct, so. There are a few people in town that do somewhat of a good job of doing that. And I just had the opportunity to meet with somebody on uh West Oak. That comes from a background as such of natural plants and. Plant geeking and things like that. So that was like the conversation was is. You've got to be able to show me someone that doesn't necessarily have a green thumb. But this is not weeds growing up or a, you know, hoax. This is what, you know, you want to be here kind of on that stuff, so. So there's some better plans I've seen for a while. But, yeah.
So if he was gonna go down the path, would it appear that this was something that.
If.
There would be a path for him to be able to have a wildlife?
That's true. So there was, there's more to it than just overgrown areas and other items needed picked up. Moved and cut down and things like that, so. Uh, for him to show me that it was. You know, on purpose and, and to encourage wildlife, other things had to be done, so. But. You know. Could be done, I just don't, don't necessarily think that's what we want it longer.
Anyone from the council? Seeing none, council please vote. The motion was to deny. So yes to deny. Oh, yes to deny, oh yes. So, sure. Sorry, I did it confusing. Very good. And the motion is approved. Which takes us to seven A, discussion of perfect follow-up on approval of Bank Financial Services Agreement.
So are currently, uh, in the past, we've been going with First Interstate Bank. Uh, we were with Great, Great Western until they switched to the British Interstate. Uh, so because our, our term was ending, we. Um, moved to give bids from First Interstate Bank, Avila. I believe we asked a couple of others, but we didn't get any response on it. Um. And Avila came in with the best proposal. So our, our suggestion is to approve the, the proposal for the available banks.
I'm going to approve actually.
Second. Jason, Dan, new discussion there. Seeing none, council please vote. It is approved. Takes us to B, discussion of perfect follow-up regarding revitalized and debated downtown business transfer jobs, so they have a brilliant development.
So it was brought to our attention from a business owner that uh a lot of communities around us are offering financial incentives for businesses to come to their town and open a business. Um, and so we started looking into it. And I'll let Brenda speak, she uh did all the research and looking to some towns that she works with and what they were doing. So we're kind of um modeling from some of the, from some of her research, but I'll let her talk about that. So uh, this is another great example of the, I can move this along of a partnership. Between the city, Nevada Economic Development and Main Street, Nevada. Uh, what this would be is we're proposing a, a year pilot that would start with your fiscal year that started uh last week. Uh, NEDC has committed their portion of the, of the project. So we're proposing that each um organization uh put ten thousand dollars towards a program. That would allow us to support um at least four new businesses uh considering locating uh in the Nevada downtown area. So um, this would be a, Emily would serve as the contact. And uh, what I would tell you is the application process uh is pretty rigorous. Well, it's just five thousand dollars. Um, it's really forcing new businesses to go through the process of developing a business plan. And um putting some thought to that, um, having discussions with their financial institutions, having a conversation with an attorney. Um, to ensure that they're putting that thought into it. And uh, in terms of the five thousand dollar investment that we be splitting. Uh, it really hopefully will be putting stronger businesses in the downtown. It also gives Emily something we can promote and sell uh as a, as an incentive um for people to locate here. So we'll alongside of that promote available space. Uh, and then use this as a tool to put people into that space. So um, this would be the piece that we would use. Uh, again, I would propose it as a pilot. And we analyze, are we bombarded with requests? Um, or is it, there's better ways we, the two organizations can invest their dollars? So I welcome any questions you have. Uh, this is really modeled very closely to a program uh that Boone has been utilizing. And again, I would say. I'm amazed, some of the folks, how they've been able to utilize their five thousand dollars. But probably what I'm more impressed is, is that it forced them to go through a process of. Uh, understanding, is this really a good plan and is it a good match for the community and is it, so. I'll take questions, I know Emily would as well.
How is this, the five thousand dollar carry, like what Boone is getting, is it?
It's exactly the same, yep, so.
And they've had success in this?
Yeah. You know. And I would tell you, they haven't proved all of them. Uh, there was one, I believe of late, that they declined, just quite frankly, the business plan was incomplete. And uh, they gave them ample opportunity to meet with a banker and work on their financial projections and they, they didn't, didn't do that. So um, it's been, like I said, I think that's been the real positive, is it forces folks to um have a real thoughtful discussion and not pull numbers. Out of the sky and try to be realistic in those projections, so.
And I know the things I worked on and have any disease, so I'll leave them there. Why are we not opening this up to more of these type of?
Um, you know, that, that's a great question and we can certainly have that conversation. I think it really started initially as. Um, we've got a few empty storefronts and we're getting feedback that we didn't have uh incentives available to bring forward. So um, that, that's certainly, I think, uh, NEDC would be supportive of that. I, I would take it back to the set board, but um.
I think it's open for that, just a lot of businesses come to our, or want to come to our downtown. And as you said, we're trying to build some storefronts that were empty, but it can be opened.
And I, and like I said, I would tell you, Boone does limit it to their downtown. It just, again, they have a lot more of these storefronts than the Bay to have. And it was a way to try to support towns.
Yeah. I can talk to Susan, go over the, the whole city.
Hard to talk about twenty forty plan, another area that was identified in that plan was the Lincoln Highway corridor and revitalization, so potentially. You don't want to do everywhere, you can target the two areas in the twenty forty plan targeted for. Specific revitalization.
Part of the Lincoln Highway to border, or is it the Main Street district? Yeah, I, I would prefer to say it, uh, in the Main Street district. I think we need to have kind of laser focus on developing our, kind of our tourism and our business district and some of these businesses they're on. I think we would want them to be in that area. And that benefits the rest of the businesses in the area. If we could put it out, it'd be like an highway by itself, it doesn't really that fit. Surrounding businesses, so it doesn't actually race.
Well, it's, that definitely is the pilot idea to me, like to be more targeted to start and try it.
And we don't, we currently don't have a lot of vacant spaces in our downtown district. So, I mean, by the end of the year, you know, maybe. Maybe we don't end up giving any of it away, but hopefully we do, we get those few that are vacant.
Do you know if Boone has an evaluation tool for the applicants? I mean, I see the, the grant requirements, but just making sure that there is going to be a denial, let me know what basis it's being denied on.
Um, you know, I think it would, the, the one I was citing here, and it really was around an incomplete application.
Okay, and that would be that TV, but I just want to make sure they, they're gonna deny on. I just don't like that business.
You don't like that business, no. I think we, we, again, I think we all have to understand that, you know, we can't be discriminative in any way, shape or form. Uh, but again, I think that's where we were very clear, you don't have your financial projections included. Not a business plan without.
Sure, some of the towns do, um. If you're like, we want this and this and this to come to our town. And if you're one of these businesses, you get the whole five thousand. If you're not one of these businesses, you get two thousand or whatever, as a way to kind of boost the types of businesses that you have in your community. So that's an option, that's awesome.
We don't have to get another smoke shop by, so located right down in the next three days, I would say.
Yes.
Alright, so we should go. Well, yeah, I, Steve, kind of to, to Jason, the just one.
Tax, tax paid money, so what unusual, no tools.
I, I agree with Jason. There's, there's a lot of sentiment out there that we're picking and choosing anyway. Add another program, do the same, doesn't delay any of those, but.
Uh, it's, it's absolutely toxic being down here. Yeah, it's absolutely toxic being down here, Main Street. Absolutely toxic. And people. Have no respect for anybody else. No, not, not saying everybody, there are certain business owners down here that have no respect for anybody else. They make up lies, they mistreat people. And I don't know why one business would want to relocate down to Main Street right now, given the way that the atmosphere is above Main Street. And I'm sorry to say that, I know a lot of you are involved in a Main Street program, but it is absolutely a toxic environment.
I think going back to Jason's point, um. I tend to breathe that way, I think especially, I mean, if you wanted to target like, but like obviously. Main Street is your destination, but like as time progresses, like the highway is gonna kind of be your main access to that downtown. And you know, the first thing you see is gonna be those things on the outlying edges, so. Um, you know, strategically thinking, whether it's now or later, I mean, I think that there is value in that. Cause there are a lot of properties, you know. The Dollar General will be falling in Main Street district, but like that's gonna look a lot better than what it's replacing. You know, just thinking along those lines, so.
There's specific areas you think are more important for revitalization, you can always top or score that. In the scoring system, scoring grid to it.
Right, but then you're pinpointing down still areas, somebody comes into town and says, I'd like to buy this area and do this. And we need to put together a program, which is already there. Taxpayer money. Usually say you don't have somebody that wants to come in and make garbage cans. And that increased tax revenue is far larger than anybody that would move into the downtown Main Street district and replace taxpayer dollars of. Five thousand dollars a year, maybe, maybe. Like somebody that can be a mass manufacturer and can increase the extreme tax dollars would be very beneficial this time.
I think I, you know, I'll maybe jump in here a bit. So, you know, we have incentive programs that we can utilize to support large employers. There are tools in our tool belts to be able to help out those folks that are creating larger number of jobs. Um, involved in interstate commerce, those sorts of things. It is harder to do smaller businesses and provide incentives. So again, um. You know, we could launch the program and if we get bombarded with applicants. Um, we can put together a scoring rubric so that we have some, something a little bit more, but. Wouldn't it be a great problem to have in three months now, you and I have to come back and say. We, we provided our four grants and they ended up on our commercial corridors. Inside or outside, and we need to have a conversation with the NEDC board and the council. We want to make the program more permanent and uh figure out a way to um move it forward. And this, I mean, all of us were just in strategic planning and maybe this is a good opportunity to leverage something with the foundation partnership as well. As a third part of the funding base, so.
Brenda, do you know of the grants that they've given out in Boone, just because they, they've kind of already gone through it? How many of them are, how long have they been doing it? How long have they been in business?
Like, you know, I, I don't have longevity there in terms of uh the most recent ones, but there've been um. Three or four, and again, one of them wasn't funded in the last six months. So again, more vacant space, a larger community, but. Um, again, the piece of it, which it doesn't matter if you're a downtown business or if you're locating on the Lincoln Highway corridor. Forcing folks, if it's a five thousand dollar uh, uh, thing at the end of this. Putting them through a business plan, I think is a good thing. And so we've got great partners, we've got great local banks that want to. And so we've got great partners, we've got great local banks that want to talk to small businesses. Uh, we would use them to promote it. Uh, the S P D C provides free financial planning to help businesses, so. I know we started with the downtown, but, um, I think we're willing to, I don't want to speak for Emily, but you know, again, I just need to take it back to the NEDC Board, just because we are changing the scope. I don't anticipate any challenges, but again, it would be a great problem if we were found to have requests, that'd be a good thing.
I'm gonna, then I can update this sheet.
I was just gonna say, I, I kind of agree with Jason's opinion on that. And, um, I think downtown is important, but I do think there's other pockets that are going to develop over time. And I think for me, the biggest importance of this is that business play. I mean, just looking at, you know, business and putting that together, looking at creating that, I mean, we might have some kind of this that decide to do it in their own, good side of the future, so. I like the idea of it, but I do think maybe we should look two down the road a little bit with it, to another spots with it. I think Main Street, of course, but I think there's future growth with that.
And I think what we bring it back, Jordan, I'll draft an application so that your eyes can see that as well, in terms of what, what are the requirements?
I've already, I've already started working on this, I've seen.
Yeah, I think that would be maybe an important thing too, to be able to see that piece of it, right? When we bring it back, we'll make sure that, that's developed.
Thank you.
So you'll see us in a couple weeks, maybe.
Thank you.
Hey, C, discussion, urgent, are you going to be no adjustment policy?
All right, so this is what I've been working on, um, sent over to you. Uh, Steve did bring up a couple of valid points and I did update those on there. Um, basically to clarify some of the, um, the adjustments, when they're available, how they apply for it. Um, so if you, do you guys have any questions? I know this was something that was brought in and, um, it's probably close to four or five months ago that you would want to start looking at this.
Is this a clar, just to clarify, this is if, if somebody says I'm in the wrong tier, or what is this for?
This is so if someone has a leaky pipe or a busted pipe or something, and they end up having a eight hundred dollar water bill, but normally they only pay a hundred dollars for the water bill. They can come in and get their sewer side of things adjusted, so it's not as high. And it'll go off to the average of what they are, yeah.
We would have a precedent that when people can show that their water didn't go down the sewer and they had a non-precedent water, water bill because of that, that they would come to council, council would most likely waive the sewer portion. So this just allows staff to administratively do some of those things, and then the precedent that council has set for us. Well, a few times a year, you know, whether your time's gone, it's pipers, and now vacation, and goes down, goes down storm drains, sanitary sewer, whatever.
And I, I think everybody cares. We have somebody moved to town years ago, irrigated their lawn, didn't understand how expensive it was going to be, came in and said, no, it went down the sewer. Uh, council decided to waive it, asked about making a policy, I think Brian has, instead of just bringing it or reviewing. Uh, then we had somebody else that had one break in a crawl space, flood. Uh, and then as a plumber, I started advising all of my customers to have a burst to go in, because basically that one shot to to get part of a bill waived, so. That's where it come from, was somebody irrigated, somebody new to town, council said, we don't want to have people come into town and then immediately step in one of the large bill. So it was never a good policy, adding a policy is a better policy, but that's where it came from, was the council has forever, one at a time, reviewed it and then waived the sanitary.
Unless we're not wanting to not continue to do that, then just a way to make it a little bit smoother for the folks there, and after we wait for a council meeting.
Makes sense.
There's our meeting, but I'm. There's anything else you'd like to see in there, you can capture what you'd like. That was good. Any additional actions? I'll make a motion to approve what the policy is presented, but it's a decision. Any discussion? None, that's what we vote. It's within historical perspective. It's approved. Um, it's this to D, easements to, to construct and maintain drainage. So the first is resolution number two, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, writing insights, non-essays. Second, Jason Sandy, any discussion? None, that's what we vote. Approved, it's this to B, resolution number three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, Phil O C Rosen Dahl and Kirsten Bell Rosen Dahl. You to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Council please vote. Approved, it's C, resolution number four, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, Brett Fabor and Denise Fabor. Looked over, second, you think. Any discussion? Seeing none, that's what we vote. Approved, it's the C D, resolution number five, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, Jordan V. Herson and Caitlin R. Herson.
That's approved, second.
What's that, Sandy? Let's give his vote. As approved, it's this E, resolution number six, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, James G. Freever declared to be freevered. Will be approved, so it's Steve. Please vote. That is approved, it's this, uh, resolution number seven, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, uh, story time for each fair association.
That's approved.
Sorry, what's that? Council please vote. That's approved, it's this E, approved class C, real alcohol license for E V bolt tube L C, E V sports bowl, five sixteen gabbing effect, July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, through July twentieth, twenty twenty four, for ten anniversary celebration, will you approve?
Second.
What's that? Any discussion there? Seeing none, that's what we vote. That is approved, it's this C D Board, starting city administrator.
All right, uh, so I'm already, before I had discussed the E V parking stations, I know in previous years, this was something that we were interested in. I just wanted to kind of get your guys' opinion on it, if this is something that we still wanted to move forward with. Uh, these would be the car charging boards that we had in the community, there's a twenty percent match for the city that we need, need to happen as well. Uh, each one of these, these boards would be about twenty five thousand dollars a piece, roughly around there. Um, so we are getting numbers from the line to see how much everything costs and everything. But I kind of wanted to hear your guys' opinion on whether I do want to continue moving down the road. Because there's a group of communities that will be banging together to apply for this grant. And that's what they did in previous years, previous years they did not get approved for it. So, um, I do think their application process is a lot stronger with this going on. Um, but just wanted to.
I'd like to see us proceed with, at least in that meeting, what the cost of it are and see if it makes sense or not. Just don't think there'll be a certain, or kind of a bulk of the reviews and appreciation of those charging stations.
To your process would apply, uh, I do not believe it will process any, then you'll apply the badge. Check, check that and see, bring it back, get the response from that. And we're looking at roughly five thousand for boards, so ten thousand dollars for getting to charging stations.
They need to deal with into it.
Um, so the spot that we were thinking about would be the Northwest Center, the parking lot on the, uh, south of the post office. And the reason, um, that is favorable site, according to Andrew Collins with Midland, is because there's housing around that area, that family, and then there's also the downtown market and housing at the boat as well. So, um, that's the first location. The second location would be the east parking lot of Score Park, southwest portion of that parking lot. Uh, and maybe that would be a good location because of how close to the proximity to Highway thirty and all of the activities that are going on outside of the park, as well as, um, I, being for dollar pressure across the street.
I think it's going to be paid, um, charging stations for the user to pay too.
The user will pay, yeah. Yeah, so what we are, what we need to figure out from the line is how much that rate would be, because technically we would be charged more for that rate, and then we would get the reimbursement from the user after it goes through through all of the, the process. I've talked with them, um, in, in the past, they're, they're going to be essentially paying the city in lieu of taxes, because they are not going to be taxed. Uh, they weren't subject to property taxes, but they have since found out that they will actually be paying property taxes. So we created agreement, they did ask for a ten year tax abatement. Uh, for housing, we have done this in the house. We typically stick to five year businesses, but for the housing, we've done this on several occasions. Um, South Mine is the first one, why I got here, that we did this for. Uh, we've done it for all the other events as well. So we will be drafting something like that, and I'll have that in front of you guys. Probably not this next meeting, because I was wanting to let Ben review it as well. Uh, but I will be drafting that shortly. Went to the senior center today, uh, they had some concerns about, mainly the the railings that were cut down because they're all rusted out. So I assure them that we will be working on that. When I talked to Joe, he's sitting next to me, just wanting to, to start working on getting those back up. Uh, I also had a hour long conversation with the Federal Railroad Association today. And they, there was Maple Street, West Maple Street that I left out on the report. Uh, I didn't think that we needed to do that, because it's not city limits, but he informed me that because we originally filed in two thousand and ten that we technically own that report now, so now we have to report on it all the time. He also informed me that there is a area in the community, it's southwest, it's the north tracks of southwest third street that is technically not a quiet zone that we applied for back in two thousand and ten, but we didn't necessarily follow through with it. So we need to reissue that, so I'll be working on paperwork on finishing that process up and getting all the correct signage and everything. Uh, and then Chris and I, and a couple of other staff members, been talking about six to me. I don't normally, uh, bring up stop signs or adding stop signs, but we've seen it in lots of traffic issues over on six to me since the overpass was finished. And so I wanted to get your input on making that a four-way stop there. That way, can eliminate some of the issues that we had, we've had, the wrecks that we've had.
Two grand four covered there, though, that we put the other place?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I have a lot of people coming to downtown. Actually, I've noticed them lanes, uh, it's coming from the east, it's kind of hard to see when you're looking back to the south. And a lot of people come in here, don't know the speed limit, they shouldn't be, but the reality is they are, right? I've had to go there a few times to get across, because it's not a comfortable feeling, so.
That's one of the worst places in the winter in the whole town.
It is also, yeah, yeah.
And that's kind of where I've, I've seen some issues, especially in the winter months, people slide through that all the time. And, um, so I just wanted to get your take on the drafting and updating our work as to include the four-way stop there.
There are public safety belts, are you talking about it, or?
Yeah, Jordan, I talked about it, so I can do it again.
Safety first.
I assume we'll work with Joe on streets to make sure it's very, very simple.
Yeah, that's true. The whole kind of sticks out in the way there, it's kind of right in my side, near, anywhere else. Uh, and the, and the last thing, I had an intern for a, a student from Iowa State. He's in the master's program for planning. And he reached out to the city meeting and asked if we'd be willing to have an intern. Um, I had told him I would talk with you guys about it. Basically, what we would have him do is train some of our staff on G I S, how to create the maps. That way we, um, didn't necessarily have to pay anybody else for it. Um, in our work session, I did notice a few different times about coming up with a master plan for parks. Uh, we've talked about a recreation plan or a plan for the old wastewater treatment facility. So that is something that we definitely have this person work on. If that's something that you guys have interest, we would not be paying the intern who would be working just for the experience. So he can take that back to his, his college courses and basically get that credit for that. All right, and that's on an ad for in the screen, a reduction screen.
You have a control on the range, what you're looking at?
Uh, I did notice that they finished all of the fencing. And last time I drove across, I didn't, I did not recall saying maybe you wrote a bit of a trail of those signs.
Yeah, it goes around much time, I think it was there last week.
We said.
Yeah. Your bridge, Sandy's bridge.
Jordan had a question come up about mosquito spray, all the rain you've had.
Yeah.
Planting sprays here?
Uh, we are, I think Tim can answer that. Typically, we spray when we, when the count is high, is that accurate?
It hasn't been very high yet to this year, but we've had a lot recently. It takes seven, ten days for a mosquito to get from ash to where it is our pest. So I think we'll probably try and get out before the story time fair next week, I don't know what day. It's this week or next week, I know the fair starts Wednesday next week, they work typically on Tuesday night, not before, so. Sometime between now and probably next Monday, they'll charge it out.
Anything else? So from fire report, just want to thank Sandy again for leading our strategic planning session, very well anticipated in that. Um also, Fourth of July and the fire department, all their work. Um and for uh putting off the city fireworks, and we'll page out a council perfectly maybe for the rest of the weekend. Um and just the community in general, for most, vast majority of people following guidelines on firework times and. I heard less from the public on topic this year, I think this year's, and I think hopefully it's because people have learned when those windows are for the most part, um the few exceptions. The, also just acknowledging Union Pacific, the slight train turnaround yesterday, they, less than twelve hours, they got it all cleaned up and out there, so. Um I think their response went pretty well. Um I'm sure our staff may have some feedback, can always provide them things that maybe they could do a little bit better, but I think for the most part. Good job getting that done. And then on obviously wastewater, so I've been conversations there, so. After last meeting, we talked about we were meeting with our engineers to respond over to Burke. We did that. They they provided us with some some questions, so our staff has gone through. Um responses to that with a goal, hopefully to have a meeting scheduled next week, so um. With the holiday kind of, it's a little bit challenging to get everybody's calendars scheduled, so hopefully here in the next state or so, we'll have a meeting on our calendars. Um when we're all going to meet together, we can add an hour's session. That should be very interesting. Sounds very worse. Back to staff.
Uh just a couple of things, you brought up fireworks. Uh we only had two fireworks related incidents. One was a trash can fire along a street. And the other was a person discharging fireworks out of their vehicle. Uh overall, it was pretty successful. Um. We do spend effort between police and fire, kind of navigating the city where fireworks are going off right at that eleven to hour. And that really seems to work pretty well on calling of of folks, so that fight amount is pretty enticing, stop shooting fireworks, so. Uh other than that, uh appreciate participating in the uh. Uh discussion today, strategic planning, it worked out really well, so that's all I have.
Aaron, council, just a couple of things tonight. Um we are working with four eligible homeowners on the owner occupied grant, so. Stay posted. Uh it's a rigorous process a little bit to have all the right documents uh. In order to sign off that you are officially become eligible for those, so. We ended up with four at this point. Uh likely will last some additional funding to discuss, we want to do another round. Uh sometime in the future or later this year. And on Friday was the deadline for the uh human service applications, but this was one year, so. Um we received six. I haven't done that preliminary review yet, but. I'll review those, make sure we have all the appropriate attachments and start the process to reviewing those. Uh something new this time, um one of our recipients from last funding cycle did not use all their funding. So we're going to need to figure out how do we even take that back and how do we need to handle that, so. Soon as I get a sense of how much, I'll work with Jordan to figure out what's the proper way to handle that, so. Just a little, a couple of things that were in the step.
Karen, you can view.
Nothing new.
Uh so one of the things that kind of developed over the course of last fiscal year was uh with all the rain we got both in the fall and in the spring. We have a few leaks in our roof, and they're not major, but. Uh we had central states come out, I think like four or five times to do minor repairs in different areas, and they. Said it was due to the skylights probably being original to the building, and they're over that main section. Uh there's nine of them, and that part of the building was built in nineteen ninety, so um it's time to replace those, so I'm pulling quotes on that. Uh and hopefully that will solve the rest of the leaking problems we've had. Uh for our summer reading, I put some numbers in your report um that I emailed Aaron, but um. We had just a huge June at the library. We had well, almost fifty two hundred people in our doors throughout the month. And our average for the whole year, our monthly average for the whole year is about thirty five hundred, so um it was very busy at the library. Uh we've got. Now over four hundred participants in our summer reading challenge, so these are kids zero to eighteen, well, zero to high school, eighteen. Um who have signed up for the program. Um kids in elementary school and below. If they need their regional, they get a little coupon. Um they can pick, we've run out of Starbucks coupons twice now, that's the most popular, but um. Ripton Donuts, uh Casey's Cookies, we've got little treats for them from all over town. And then teens get little scratch off tickets, and they get to enter those into a big price if they don't win for a raffle. Or they get a little snack of some type if they are an instant winner, and we're seeing a lot more teams engaged at the library. In really positive ways this year. Um and then our weekly programs, uh. We still have three weeks left of our summer learning challenge, and we've already had. More people participate in our programs than we did throughout the whole summer last year, so uh we're really excited by our numbers. Uh beyond our kid stuff, we also have three really exciting adult programs this month. On July eighteenth, Rochelle Chase, who is an author, uh she was a journalist for the Going Register, but she wrote a book about. Uh and has done a lot of research on the historic Iowa town of Buxton, Iowa, which was um. The black utopia of Iowa, so a really interesting uh. Historical perspective. And then July, Korea, we have a lawyers and libraries program. Uh somebody's going to come, Marlene Mosley is going to come and talk about the basics of wills, trusts, and probates. And then on August first, we've got Tyler Sullivan coming. He has a really great um social media presence. Presence um called Iowa Seen and Used by Foot. He has visited at age ninety six counties in Iowa and run over a mile in each one. And does a lot of historic um work and like promoting of Iowa tourism and stuff, where very much, but those two. Any questions? Alright, thank you.
Love you.
Love you.
My Rob is on Zoom, anything for me, Mike? Here's a, anything for council before we adjourn? Ryan, are you going to talk to the rise of vice, or will I, the situation, thank you.
Um.
All of the church, or Dane, Jason, all those in favor, please sign.
Oh, yeah.
You post. And you're adjourned.
We're going to have an exam session.
Oh, and then exam session.